We call the October 6, 2022, regular meeting of the Village Board to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Schenk.
Here.
Trustee Forster.
Here.
Trustee Markarth.
Here.
Trustee Takaoka.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
And President Byrne gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the duration of the meeting.
Second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Okay, we've got a call and recall to order. Would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are there any citizens who wish to address the board on something other than the Halloween trick-or-treating? Because what we'll do, we'll get to, that's on our unfinished business, and it'll come up very, very quickly, so we're going to do that when we get to that on the agenda. So is there anybody else that wants to talk about something other than? Okay. Then our first item is just the Assistant Village Manager, the Greenest Region Update?
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone. It has been approximately one year since staff introduced the Greenest Region Compact to the board, and as we're approaching that one-year mark of introduction, we thought it would be the ideal time to give an update to some of the efforts that staff in the village have taken to contribute towards sustainability. So a brief PowerPoint presentation has been presented to give that update. So some background refresher, this is more for the community that watches the board meetings at home, and for members in the audience who may not be familiar with what the GRC is. This was approved by a resolution in early 2022. For the community and persons unfamiliar with the concept, the GRC is supported by the Metropolitan Marist Caucus, and it's now 137 communities participating. The GRC provides a framework for municipalities to ensure sustainable communities across the Chicago region. To the point, the GRC presents consensus goals for environmental sustainability to be addressed at the local level. The GRC influences the strength of the municipal government to build vibrant, sustainable communities across the Chicago region, and the consensus goals guide municipal action and support the village administration in our role as environmental leaders to foster collaboration that has provided, that has positive impacts on sustainability in the region. So again, 137 communities now, which is helping to improve the quality of life for over 6 million people in our region. When this concept, when this concept was introduced, we discussed the alignment between the GRC and the village mission and vision statements, and you can see under the village vision statement I've highlighted, our priority is a concern for ecological stewardship and cooperation with other governmental bodies and agencies, and I believe that we're going to demonstrate that with some of the proofs that we're going to present later. During our initial introduction, we shared that the GRC framework is built on 30 sustainability plans and documents already in use in Illinois. It incorporates more than 10 documents from regional, national, and global organizations that are used to guide sustainable municipal actions, and fundamentally, it is built from goals and actions that are broadly applicable and suited to municipal action. This is a tool that helps communities begin assessing actions already, already accomplished as well. The GRC framework is a document that provides suggested objectives and strategies and tools to help communities achieve consensus goals, and I'm sharing the 10 categories that we have to work with, from climate, economic development, energy, land use, leadership, mobility, municipal operations, sustainable communities, water, waste, and recycling. Under each of the categories, there are strategies highlighted. So for example, in climate, one of the areas I'm going to demonstrate where I believe we had a lot of strength was education and outreach. In economic development, obviously, our policy can help guide actions. Under energy, again, education and outreach. In land use, some of our strengths are obviously in our parks and open space, our urban forestry, our landscapes. And leadership, I believe that we are leading the way in this, definitely with collaboration, which I'm going to talk about in a moment. Mobility, one of the areas I think that we had tremendous strength this year was identifying gaps in pedestrian and bicycle networks, creating bicycle and pedestrian plans to improve connectivity throughout the village. Under municipal operations, again, I think we've, we're going to demonstrate that we've led by example, and I've highlighted municipal fleet because, in speaking to some of our staff, we believe there's some room for improvement there with maybe looking at electric vehicles in the future. Under sustainable communities, there is a category on social justice or addressing social injustice, and, you know, we're still working with Dr. Brian Watkins as part of our diversity and inclusion initiative, and he's been meeting with staff, and we continue to listen to the community, and that program continues, and it'll be continuing for the remainder of this fiscal year. Under water, I believe our stormwater management and our green infrastructure is very strong. We'll be talking about that. And waste, probably one of the strongest areas I believe that we're going to be demonstrating. We have reduced the use of paper in municipal offices. We're providing curbside recycling to residents. We continue to support regional efforts for developing food scrap and composting services. We're strong in our disposal of household waste with our alliance with SWALCO. We're working in many areas from electronic waste, pharmaceutical waste, medical waste. We're engaging with solid waste agencies to manage waste sustainability, sustainably, and we continue to educate the community on recycling and composting efforts. Some other areas we'd like to touch on is we organized the Community Wide Cleanup Day, and we've engaged volunteers in recycling and education efforts throughout the year. This is an example of how staff has to address or select the categories. This is one category that we mentioned. This is the energy category, and you'll see on the left, it gives a goal, and then it gives us strategies, ways that the village can, can show its, its efforts. One I'd like to focus on is the mobility category. As you see here, one of the strategies is to identify gaps in the pedestrian and bicycle networks and the barriers to activate these modes of travel. You'll recall that we have a bike, we do have a bike path plan, and Dave worked very hard with our partners at the county to connect Greg's Landing subdivision down to NCT. This also occurred on Route 21 as we're continuing to develop a bike and pedestrian path from the shops of Greg's Landing that come all the way down now to Hawthorne Mall. So village staff is pleased to share the log of objectives achieved, and I've presented the board this document in front of you, and I'm just going to highlight some of the activities and objectives achieved in 2022. So some items of significant note, the village joined the GRC by passing ordinance 9-12, and an educational component began for senior staff on the topic of sustainability, which included how each department can support this initiative. During February, the village began to participate in green energy initiatives and participated with community solar presentations to better understand opportunities for renewable energy. Staff began to use village communication platforms to create awareness and promote the village's simplified solar panel permitting process, and we began to use village communications to create awareness of the Illinois Choice Program, which allows the residents to acquire green energy from vendors of their choice. The village also began partnering with the Vernon Township Energy Resilience Commission on a feasibility study to evaluate future opportunities. As spring approached, efforts to create the Butterfield Road Bike and Pedestrian Path started, which connects Greg's Landing to NCT. Village staff began giving presentations to community groups such as the Rotary Club and our seniors organizations on the benefits of these initiatives. The village further passed ordinance 22-29, which was a contract for ecological services to be performed, which includes native stewardship of the village's open spaces. The village began working with partners such as Waste Management and sponsored Earth Day events, in which native plants were provided and could be planted throughout the community. Village staff and officials, to include trustee Takaoka, met with officials from Greystar, the developer of Beverly. We received an update on the proposed creation of a rain garden, which will be adjacent to their water feature leading into this residential development. As the board will recall, this rain garden amenity was an added, was added as a condition of part of the approval of the redevelopment of the former Showplace Theater site. During spring, our Public Works Department began maintenance and plannings at all public spaces and streetscapes, ensuring beautiful landscapes and streetscapes that enhance the gateways and important public meeting spaces. During May, the village earned Tree City status 30 years in a row. Components include the requirement to spend at least $2.08 per capita on forestry, and it's important to note that the village spends approximately double this amount, which shows tremendous commitment to urban forestation efforts. Staff from Public Works conducted an Arbor Day event at the Arbor Theater, and this was a partnership with Vernon Hills Lincolnshire Go Green, and included an educational component on food waste, curbside composting, and protecting habitat for pollinators, along with sharing information on the value of native trees and plant materials. Native saplings were also provided to attendees. A key initiative conducted in May was implementation and promotion of Ride Lake County, which is a regional transportation innovation for seniors and persons with disabilities. Several other events were conducted during spring and summer to include SWALCO events at Public Works, SWALCO rain barrel and compost bin events, and promotion of SWALCO Special Materials Collection events, which started in May and were conducted over the course of the summer. During summer, as part of the redevelopment of Hawthorne Mall, there was collaboration between village staff and Centennial to create and construct a vibrant, open space that can be a public gathering area at the mall as well. The village has worked to restore wetlands and other important ecosystems with a shoreline stabilization effort at Harvey Lake, and to continue efforts to make Vernon Hills more bicycle-friendly. When Portillo's recently petitioned the village for drive-through lanes, the village provided a forum for a resident who desired to see bike racks installed to support safe and active bicycle transportation and pedestrian connectivity throughout the community. Portillo's agreed to this, and the bike rack parking has been installed. In addition to the individual tasks being cited, there is also an extensive, extensive listing in this report of items achieved by the village that significantly, significantly contribute towards sustainability. As mentioned, these items include everything from curbside recycling, additional recycling services for items not suitable for curbside recycling, which include tree pickup, household chemical waste collection days, electronics waste collection points, proper disposal of medical waste, supporting pharmaceutical waste collection, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I also want to highlight that when the new operators of White Deer Run took over, one of the conditions of this approval was the planting of 100 additional trees at White Deer Run. As the board can see, the record of activities before you is extensive. I've only covered on about 10% of them. We have created this record of our actions to contribute to the Greenest Region Compact, and we now have a webpage. After the board's review of this document, if you approve, we can place this online for the community to review as well. I think it's been a great first year, and I just want to thank everybody, from individuals to community groups who have supported these initiatives, as well as the board for giving the staff the time and opportunity to participate with members of the caucus on this initiative.
Okay, thank you, John. Any comments or questions from the board?
So I just want to, job well done. I mean, I'm looking at this, and you, there's so much on here that you and your teams have done in our community, and we shall be proud to be as sustainable and green as we're going in the direction we're going, and so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, it's a lot of partnerships and collaboration, and we're, we're proud to be a part of it.
Extremely thorough. It covers a lot of different angles. Other comments from the board?
Since you brought up the subject of bicycle paths and pedestrian paths, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if we want to do it in new business or some other time, but I'm curious with our new development at the mall, there's no easy access to cut across south, between the north and south parts there. There's only the Milwaukee crosswalk, and then nothing until Lakeview Parkway that I'm aware of. So, so for pedestrians, and I've seen families like standing by where Walmart is trying to get across, and they don't know where to go. Do you know, was that in our master plan to put in some kind of access for pedestrians and bicycles between the mall and the shops to the south?
I'm not aware of any. I know that down the road, as part of our capital improvement planning, there was a proposed similar intersection to what we're doing at Lakeview and 60, similar intersection improvements to Fairway and 60, so there may be some crosswalk and pedestrian improvements as part of that expansion, but that's, I think, later in our capital improvement program. Nothing further east, though, that I'm aware of between Fairway and Milwaukee.
Because now we're going to have all of these residents that some of them may want to walk to go to Walmart or one of these other shops on the south side there, and there's not, not an easy way for them to do that. So hopefully, we can get that into the budget soon to.
Yeah, just to remind, Route 60 would be iDots.
iDots per view.
That's something we'd have to work with them on. I'm trying to think of the TIFF boundaries in my head, and there may be some opportunity for utilization of some of those funds for improving potentially a crosswalk in that middle block area.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, then there are no other speaking parts, correct? So next item would be the omnibus vote agenda. Item H has been polled, oh, I'm sorry, is Public Works?
No, I think you're right.
Yeah, we're, yeah, okay. Items A through G, because H has been polled, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Or Chief, are you going to address, you're going to address the Halloween thing later, correct?
It will be unfinished business.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted, just wanted to double check that. All right. Okay, so is there a motion to approve items A through G with H polled? Motion to approve? A motion of second, comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markarth.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that puts us to unfinished additional business.
Tom, really quick, is H off the agenda? That wasn't the Halloween, though, according to what I'm looking at.
H is off the agenda.
H, not H, yeah, that's a mistake. This was H of the.
Of the omnibus.
Of the omnibus.
Okay, it wasn't.
It's going to be the fall party, the 18th.
That's just going to be delayed till the next week.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, no, this is, now we're under unfinished business approval of the 22, 2022 Halloween trick-or-treat hours. So since we have some people who wish to address, when you come up, we ask that you, do we need to get, yeah, there's a sign-in sheet, and if you could state your name and address, and then, you know, before you leave, jot down name and address, we'd appreciate it, so. Who'd like to start?
Go ahead.
No one ever wants that first spot, right? Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Lauren Avazian. I live at 1750 Lake Charles Drive in Greg's Landing. I have two children, 13 and 11, one of which is here tonight to speak to all of you. I would like to touch on a few key points from the email I sent yesterday in support of keeping trick-or-treating on Halloween before you cast your vote tonight. My kids want to trick-or-treat on Halloween, their friends want to trick-or-treat on Halloween, so I'm here on their behalf and as their voice. Please bear with me, I'll do my best to keep this quick, but after spending an entire day talking to countless residents, there are some things we'd all like to be heard. I did not think this would be a hill I would die on, because it's Halloween, but then again, it's Halloween. You trick-or-treat on Halloween, not the day before, not two days before, not five days before, which is what it will turn into when Halloween falls later in the week. So here I am, dying on this hill for my kids, their friends, and all of our neighbors who want the tradition of trick-or-treating to remain on Halloween. After a few years of our lives being completely turned upside down, I think we've had enough changes for a bit. With Halloween only three weeks away, I strongly believe this decision is being made way too quickly and too late in the game, and it's already causing a lot of confusion within the community. As I stated in my email, all sports and activity schedules have been finalized for a long time. If you move to Sunday now, you're going to have a lot of upset kids when parent, and parents, when they have to choose one over the other, which will happen. We are a family that will likely need to make that choice between a playoff football game and trick-or-treating, and I firmly believe that kids shouldn't have to make that choice. At a bare minimum, I think we should pause on making a change this year, as it will really throw a wrench into already established commitments. Now let's talk about the survey that seems to be bearing weight on this vote. The survey sent to District 73 families wasn't a standalone survey with a detailed reason or reasons for suggesting the change. We received one email buried multiple, buried multiple bullet points down, and the survey wasn't left open long enough for everyone to see it or really even truly talk about it. Most of the parents I spoke to today never even saw the survey. I also believe that the parents of District 73 only represent a portion of the voice of the community on this topic. I know many high schoolers that still trick-or-treat, and their parents weren't given that same opportunity to voice their opinion. This is what the survey said, quote, "In recent years, many parents have expressed support for joining other communities that regularly hold trick-or-treating on the Sunday afternoon closest to October 31st, rather than on the weekday evening of Halloween," end quote. It did not cite any specific reasons for the change. How many is many? Recent years have been COVID years, where trick-or-treating has been hit or miss depending on comfort level. The communication was vague. So my question as a resident is, what is driving this change? Is it driven by daylight concerns, safety concern? As a Vernon Hill resident for seven years, I'm not aware of anything that's made our children unsafe at any point on Halloween. I think the communication could have been much better so that people could make an informed decision. The survey should have been a standalone email and given months ago so people could have a dialogue about it and put some thought into their response. I think the community also really needs to think of the implications moving to Sunday would have as far as the influx of cars and families coming here to trick-or-treat. For example, if we have trick-or-treating on Sunday this year, I'll be taking my kids and a car full of kids to Libertyville to trick-or-treat, and I'm just one parent who will do that. Think of all the kids from other communities who will come here on Sunday, the extra foot traffic and the extra cars that will increase safety concerns. Also, many parents that I've talked to have said that they will still have candy for those who want to trick-or-treat on Halloween, or will organize their own trick-or-treating within their own neighborhoods on Halloween. So now we're possibly dealing with two trick-or-treating days, which defeats the purpose of the switch. At the end of the day, I think we all want the same thing for our children. We want them to celebrate Halloween, a holiday they get so excited about, trick-or-treat with their friends, and do so safely. I thank the Vernon Hills Police Department for keeping our village, village safe for our kids. I have always felt Halloween afternoon and evening has been a wonderful experience and safe for our children. Most of trick-or-treating hours are in daylight, and most young kids are finished after the first hour or two. It's a longstanding tradition that should remain intact, just like it is in Libertyville, Mundeline, Antioch, Barrington, Buffalo Grove, Fox Lake, Grace Lake, Hawthorne Woods, Ingleside, Island Lake, Johnsburg, Killdeer, Lake Bluff, Lake Forest, Lake Villa, Lake Surrock, Lake Moore, Lincolnshire, Lindenhurst, McHenry, Richmond, Ringwood, Spring Grove, Volo, Wakanda, Wildwood, and Winthrop Harbor. All of these communities are keeping with tradition, so I'm not sure why Vernon Hills feels the need to break with it. I thank you all for serving our community, and thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I really hope you take this into consideration before you vote and think about the long-term implications this will have on our community. We've already had so many things divide our community in the past few years, trick-or-treating shouldn't be one of them. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that if the fun is taken out of Halloween, we will have a community filled with massively disappointed kids. Life is just getting back to somewhat normal, so please, let Halloween be normal, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I got a quick comment. I was not here at the meeting when this was proposed, so Chief Crease, she brings up a very good point. If we do on the 30th, I think we're going to have, you're going to have actually more people in this community on Sun, on Sunday, and then they're going to go trick-or-treat there, Tom.
Could we hold board comments, and we'll see how many more people want to come in, and then we'll, yeah, and then we'll open it up to board. Anyone else want to come up and address the issue?
I'm Maya Anderson.
I'm Presley Schenk.
And I'm Claire Avazian.
We're all in middle school. I'm in eighth grade.
I'm in seventh grade.
And I'm in sixth grade.
We believe that Halloween should, trick-or-treating should be on the actual date of Halloween, on Monday, October 31st. We want to cover three points that we feel are pretty big for us. So one big point for me personally, and I know a lot of kids my age as well, a lot of us play in big tournaments over the weekends, especially as we're coming back into sports season and coming to an end as well. Tournaments last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so we end Sunday nights. So a lot of kids, especially in middle school, will be missing the trick-or-treating time as they're coming home from tournaments three hours away to an hour away, just come from playing back. And even if they come home from like 3:00, we're going to be tired and won't want to go back out and go trick-or-treat. So if it's on a Monday night, most people don't have sports on Monday nights, so we have more time to go out and trick-or-treat.
And then the second point is that families might have previously planned activities or like parties on this weekend, which could conflict with the, with trick-or-treating, and could possibly have kids upset because they can't go trick-or-treating on the weekend.
Lastly, in a few years, when Halloween is on a Thursday, trick-or-treating will almost be a week before Halloween. Little kids have been excited for this day for months, and this would be less exciting because it's on a completely different date than actual Halloween.
Thank you for having us come up here and sharing our opinions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, do we want to maybe put the sign-in sheet on your desk, and then we could? Go to the next. Yeah, we could have the next speaker up while people are signing in, and. Thank you. Yeah, you've, you've had this discussion, I'm assuming, at, at home? Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Chris Wire.
Go ahead.
You can pull the microphone.
My name's Madison Wire.
I am Brian Wire. Actually, this is our first.
And your address?
I'm sorry, address is 665 Cuneo Boulevard in Vernon Hills, the Cuneo Mansion residence. So this is actually our first board meeting in our life. I've never been to a board meeting, and.
You have to miss, bud.
Yeah, so, well, no, this is interesting, because I'd like to see how and show my kids how government works, and then instead of complaining about things, you get to actually voice your concern, and then there's no complaining after that. Whatever the vote is, the vote is that, and then you just take that. I won't be, so thanks, you had some great comments. I'll just keep mine short and brief. So I just retired from the military, did 25 years in the military, and.
Thank you for your service.
Oh, it's my honor, yeah, thank you. And I just bring that up, not for me, but just to say that in the military, we had customs, courtesies, and traditions, and those traditions were really, really part of who we were, and we didn't shy away from traditions. Traditions were what they were. And so I've always felt and believed Halloween, we should be on Halloween the 31st, as it is a tradition, similar to other traditions that we do have. And I do agree with the young lady that mentioned it could cause some confusion this time for other things, and if something down the road wanted to change, maybe we could. I still wouldn't agree with it, but if that's the way we would want to do things in the future, maybe this year wouldn't be that year. But I would hope that this board continues to have traditions and honors those traditions here and in the future. Do you want to say anything else? Do you want to say anything else? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys serving the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else on this?
Hi, I'm Terry McCray. I live at 197 Colonial Drive in Vernon Hills, and the key word here is tradition. So I want to ask, you don't have to answer me, because I don't know if it's proper protocol, but I want to ask, as you're sitting in your seat, and you were a child, did you trick-or-treat on Halloween, or did you trick-or-treat on another day? So I grew up, we trick-or-treated on Halloween. So when I had kids, that was like the best day. We, you know, the kids, the little kids, the big kids, whatever. My kids, let me just talk about my kids. The little kids, my little kids would go to their preschool in their costume, and then I'd pick them up, and then we'd come home, we'd go trick-or-treating on Halloween day. Then they get to elementary school, they have their Halloween parties. They show up, at the end of the day, they have their parties, they're in their costumes, and I'm picking them up, and guess what? We can't get home fast enough, I have to hold them off. Wait a minute, you can't go to 4:00, okay? 4:00, no, 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 can't go to 4:00. 4:00 comes, we're hitting the streets in our neighborhood. It's Halloween day, it's an exciting day for the kids, it's fun. Did you trick-or-treat on another day besides Halloween? Did you, did you? I mean, it's a tradition for our community, and I do think it's going to cause a lot of confusion. Lauren said it correctly. My kids have already said, well, maybe we'll go to Libertyville on Monday night, or, you know, go here, or go there. We want to keep trick-or-treating in our community, and if we change the day, people will go elsewhere. I don't think we really want that.
and like, you know, they had mentioned then they'll go to Libertyville and go trick-or-treating. I think if anything, you're asking for more people to come here because like, oh, Vernon Hills is Sunday, we'll double dip, we're gonna go to Vernon Hills. I think we're gonna get a lot more people and then people will go to other communities. Yeah.
Well, two classes of eighth graders I talked to the other day, one of the main reasons they wanted it kept on Sunday was because they were gonna go two days.
Right, exactly. Exactly. But I think you're inviting more kids from other communities just to flood in here on Sunday.
That was the wrong.
Right.
Wrong answer in terms of, of why they were. And they, and they were unanimous, they wanted it to be a little bit later. I mean, I have to make mention of, since I did survey them, I want to make mention that I, that I did. Trustee Markwart.
Yes, and when I grew up, I was in Glenview, they actually had Halloween and then they had beggars' night. So we had two nights out of it. And in looking at this, I thought, Chief brought up something that I thought, oh, Sunday. As a child for me, your parents set you out the door and you were trick-or-treating. Now, parents go with their kids. So I've seen in my neighborhood where parents are out there and they're having probably as much fun as the kids, having a glass of wine or a beer as they walk down the road house to house. So I thought, geez, that was, that'd be pretty good to have on Sunday. Then I've read over 30 comments that have come in. Probably out of those 30 comments, I think there were four, 37 or something.
Yeah, counted, I counted five.
So, four or five wanted Sunday. The majority of people wanted the tradition, the 31st. So I probably have to say, I'm looking at what people want. So, when it comes down to it, I'm looking at the 31st.
Other comments? Trustee Forster?
I was just gonna say, I agree as well. I had the exact same school of thought that you did. Being a parent, I always found it hard to rush home from work to make it to go trick-or-treating on, on the actual 31st when it fell on a weekday. But you did it because that's what you did for your kids and, and you do it because they enjoy it. So, taking the convenience factor out of it and recognizing like you did as well, there seems to be a, a lot of great points that all of you made, and I can't argue with them, I would agree with them. And it, based, like you said, on the emails, it seems that the general public is looking to do that and we're here for the community, so.
Did you, did you by any chance poll the young people that live with you or?
I got an 18-year-old living with me, so he's, he'll probably drive trick-or-treating, so.
Because we've heard from one of the trustees.
Yes.
And.
She, she is in charge.
She's, yeah, she spoke for the family?
She spoke, she spoke for, that's my daughter.
I had a feeling that was, yeah. I had a feeling that was true.
My 18-year-old, I say, really? You're gonna go? They, they only go to a couple houses at that age, but they do sometimes go to friends' houses and stuff. So, I just, I'm, I thank you for your comments. They were all very well-articulated and good job.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
So, I concur with, with everyone in terms of well-articulated comments. We appreciate all of your input very much. It's nice to, to know people actually are listening to what's going on in the community and also have, want to have input and it's not just us making these decisions on our self, by ourselves. To answer one of your questions, I can't remember if it was yours, Lauren or Terry's, but where did this come from? I think part of this came from the unfortunate situation we had a few years ago with the bad weather and we were forced to, to move Halloween, and it seemed like things worked pretty well and we got lucky actually doing it a day or so beforehand. And then, and then the real reason though, I believe, is just Chief Kreese's suggestion that it might be safer for the kids. And I'll, I'll ask him about that again in a moment, but as a pediatrician, it's hard for me to do anything against childhood safety. So, before I end my comments, I want to ask Chief Kreese to comment on it again. What, you'd mentioned you'd heard stories about near misses in the community and certainly outside of the community, so I just want to hear those before we, before we make our final decision.
Okay, yeah, thank you, and I appreciate everyone's comments. I, and I prefaced last month's comments with, I think, this warrants a conversation with the community, and I think the poll question was really led by the interactions in 2019 and, and last year when we did trick-or-treating in the afternoon. 2019 was weather forced us to do it on the weekend. Last year, my recommendation was we did it in the weekend, so the board had that conversation. My recommendation, and something that traditionally we've done here, is ask the, the chief to provide the board of recommended hours, and last year the board went with the afternoon hours. During both 2019 and 2021, I got to every neighborhood I could and asked people involved in trick-or-treating, both giving out candy and walking around with their children, what they thought. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of the afternoon hours, and I further asked them, well, what about when trick-or-treating falls on a Monday? Again, it was overwhelmingly, let's do it on the, the weekend before. So that's what prompted the survey. Survey comes back 70% of the 460 respondents said would prefer on, on a Sunday. I thought that was pretty powerful. The safety issues are, again, why I'm driven to make the recommendation I'm making, because as a police officer in 32 years, I have personally dealt with tragedy that, that is preventable. And when we, we could all appreciate certain age children are pretty manageable, but when we have parents trying to corral multiple numbers of children and letting, you know, doing our best, tragedies happen and small children will sometimes get excited, run into traffic, and get, get hit. And I've experienced that in a very safe community, in a very safe neighborhood. And so when you look at the data, you find that Halloween is a night when there are twice the children fatalities, pedestrian children, automobile fatalities, twice as much as any other night of the year. So, you know, I'm, I'm driven by all that information to make my recommendation, and I preface it with a conversation with the community, and at the end of the day, I'm one person having that conversation, you're seven, and so the, the, you know, it's, it's certainly never going to be a, a, a decision that will make everyone happy. And, and I don't have to say this, you know it, but I want to say it so everyone appreciates that the Vernon Hills Police Department will be there on whatever hours trick-or-treating are to keep our community as safe as possible. I, I just, I can only share with you that over my years of being a police officer, it is probably the one I'm most fearful of. It's the day I'm most fearful of, and when we've seen the last two trick-or-treating experiences here in Vernon Hills really turn more into a block party event where there's just a ton of parents, a lot of supervision, in a Sunday afternoon with very little traffic, it's really a different event. In those communities, there are over 10 of them in Lake County that have made this a tradition for a long time. They, they find it, it very popular. So, but at, at the end of the day, it is, I think there were good points made, and I appreciate whatever decision the board makes and will support the community in the best way we can. Thank you.
Well, in, in response to that, 2021 actually fell on a Sunday, so it was kind of a.
Yeah, so that kind of changes things a little bit.
The change were the hours. We did the afternoon hours. That was, and that was a discussion we had about the benefit of trick-or-treating in the afternoon hours.
Well, that was the one thing the eighth graders were unanimous on, they wanted to be able to go past dark. That was, that was a unanimous vote.
And, and I think it is, to, to their point, and I was thinking of this as well, it wasn't exactly a scientific survey, it was a very specific population that was asked about it, pretty much eliminated all of the older age groups from that. So it's not surprising that, that parents of the younger children would choose the earlier hours as opposed to the later hours because their kids aren't affected and they're home before it's dark anyway, so it didn't, didn't really matter. Yeah, we're in a lose-lose situation here with this vote because there's a lot of people who feel strongly about, about both.
Yeah.
About both nights, I think.
Yeah, I, Chief Kreese, everyone knows, hey, we, he's awesome. We have a great police department here. His recommendation is purely based upon, you know, his experience and, you know, not trying to sabotage Halloween. However, you know, I think just, you know, I've, I've been here 23 years, I see that the age groups, the kids that are coming, they're a lot younger and they're supervised by parents. I'm assuming the safety concern is relative to when it's in the, when it gets dark out then?
Yeah, it's, it's really the combination of a weekday evening with.
Right.
People trying to get home from work.
Right.
And the hours of darkness being so much different than a Sunday afternoon.
I understand.
During daylight, that's.
I mean, that, it made sense last year if it falls on Sunday, move into the afternoon, but, you know, I, I think that keeping in the tradition, I've always trick-or-treated during the week, and quite honestly, I see mostly D-73 kids, some eighth graders, very few high schoolers, maybe freshmen or sophomores, but they're all supervised by parents, and I think.
Well, and one of the words.
Parents are vigilant about that nowadays, just because.
One of the words you used was the same word used by one of our speakers in that I, and, and it's one of the words that, you know, the, some of the kids talked to me about, and that was that it, it is such an established tradition.
Yeah.
I mean, it.
People look forward to Halloween almost more than.
And I really do think.
Any other holiday during the year.
We're looking at more people coming in on, on Sunday.
Well, and it's been all Hallows' Eve since the 8th century, so.
Yeah.
When Pope Gregory moved it, you know.
Are you? Yeah. So, you know, I want to thank Chief Kreese because he's in charge of our public safety in our town, and without our police department, we wouldn't be as tight as we are as a community because in order to be, feel that togetherness, you have to feel safe. That's your number one priority, feel safe and you can do everything else. So Chief Kreese would never do anything to harm our community. He knows how important what, what it feels like. You're, you, we, you and I spoke today quite extensively, because I wasn't at that meeting two weeks ago either. And you had a lot of very good points, there's no doubt about it, and we talked for a little bit, and, and the tradition that you're in up at Gurnee, where, where you, they've been doing for 30 years, and that has become their tradition. So it's very hard to, to, what was the word during COVID? To pivot?
And create a new tradition.
To pivot, to create a new tradition on the, on the heels of the storm, COVID, you know, it's, it's tough. And our community is very safe because our families are out there with them. And I get it, there's parents that can't get back from work also, but the flip side is that you have kids now that can't go because they have tournaments or games on Sunday. So, thank you for everything that you do, and I think most people don't understand the extent what you do do in your department to keep us safe. But as we also, we talked about, it's a community vote, well, it's a community discussion. And on the survey, it's D-73, and one thing that you and I kind of came to realization is, well, the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, the middle schoolers tend to kind of, this is their moment to kind of go off, to be with their friends and learn to kind of be responsible. And we polled the parents, but it would make sense to poll the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders too individually, because I'm sure, as you kind of had an informal one.
Yeah.
Today. So obviously, I'm, I'm leaning definitely keeping it on the 30th, not leaning, I'm at keeping it on the 31st. I have full 100% faith that our police department or fire, everyone will do what they need to do to keep our families safe, our, our kids safe, our neighbors will look out, we look out for each other in this town. And when it falls back on a weekend, it's great, you know, that's how it rolls, you know? We get a leap year midweek, so we actually get to skip a day, a weekday this, in a few years. But that's just kind of, i- it's a nice tradition. We, sometimes when you know you need to be extra vigilant, you're really sharp. And I think our school system does a great job educating our parents to say Halloween's coming up, these are things you want to watch for, keep an eye out for, and I ask our community to also keep an eye out for each other during that day. So, thank you, and thank you to all the speakers. You guys, very well spoken tonight. It's great to see people come out when they have, whether it's email or comment on Facebook or public comment, because that's what that podium is there for, that's what these avenues are there for. So thank you, because you can't make a difference. You always said that.
So are, i- is there a motion? Do, do we want 2 to 6, 4 to 8, 2 to 8? And do we want Sunday or, or the 31st? And that's what we have to have is a motion with either Sunday, the 30th, or the Monday, the 30th, keeping it the 31st, and then what the hours are. And I also assured the eighth graders, and Chief, you'll back this up, I hope, that even if it was 2 to 6, they would not be arrested for being out at 6:30.
These are recommended hours that we provide the community.
Yeah, that was exactly what I assured them. It was not like a curfew.
But you're 2 to 6, you're speaking on the Sunday, if it's on Sunday, so we have to pick the day first, right?
If it's Monday, it's 4 to 8.
Because of school.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
So, should we do an individual motion for?
No, I would just say, a, a motion, is there a motion to set trick-or-treat hours for 4 to 8 on the 31st?
A motion to set trick-or-treat hours on Monday, 31st, to Halloween.
4 to 8.
To always be on Halloween, the 31st, right?
Well, we can, we can always revisit it next year, so.
So basically, it's always on the 31st. The motion would have been to keep it on the Sunday.
No, motion's just for this year, yeah. Well, we've got to clarify what we're setting this year.
I, I moved to have Halloween out, Halloween trick-or-treating hours for October 31st, Monday, from 4 to 8 p.m.
Are we gonna have to do this every year, though?
Well, if you're setting the suggested hours every year, then, then yes, you would be.
Yeah.
So if you're deciding to keep it on Halloween, it would just essentially be for setting the hours.
Setting the hours. So is that okay, what he said?
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a?
Then I second that.
Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, a roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Takaka?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye. If I want to go back to school, I have to say aye.
Oh, yeah. You would be, yes.
Okay, motion carries, so we are, you have successfully petitioned the government, which is an, which is an important step.
You get your government merit badge for whatever that might be.
Who do you have for social studies now?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Morris.
Okay, make sure you tell her that you've successfully petitioned the government.
Extra credit.
And that's, yes, you should get points for that.
And I, I will, I will verify it for you. Okay. Next item then is, and you can feel freely, you don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting if you don't want to, feel free. Next item is the approval and passage of ordinance 2022-106, an ordinance amending the Village of Vernon Hills salary program by adjusting the hourly pay range for seasonal maintenance worker and replacing the position of assistant telecommunications supervisor with the position of telecommunications manager.
You get your government merit badge for whatever that might.
Who do you have for social studies now?
Me?
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Morris.
Okay, make sure you tell her that you've successfully petitioned the government.
Extra credit.
And that's, yes, you should get points for that.
And I, I will, I will verify it for you. Okay. Next item then is, and you can feel freely, if you don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting, if you don't want to, feel free. Next item is the approval and passage of ordinance 2022-106, and ordinance amending the Village of Vernon Hills salary program by adjusting the hourly pay range for seasonal maintenance worker and replacing the position of assistant telecommunications supervisor with the position of telecommunications manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's a, a proposed change to our salary program. The first one is, is somewhat timely with the winter season upon us, or, or coming around the corner. We're looking to start recruiting for our seasonal maintenance workers, also known as snowbirds, that help us with our snow removal operations. In, in creating the job ad for this description, we've noticed that our, our current pay range for the position is a little bit lower than what we're seeing out in the marketplace. So we have a recommendation to increase the maximum hourly rate for that position from the current $21.56 per hour up to $25 per hour. We think that'll be a little more competitive. I thought you had a question, sorry. I, I couldn't tell if you were looking at me, sorry. There's a microphone right between our, our vision there. So that would increase the maximum hourly wage to $25 an hour for the seasonal maintenance worker. And then there's a Second Amendment, which would remove the current assistant telecommunications supervisor position and replace that with a telecommunications manager. Chief Kreese gave a brief update on that at our last closed session, and can speak to that change if anyone has any questions.
Okay, comments or questions from the board? This looks pretty straightforward. Anybody have a comment or question?
What's considered seasonal timeframe?
It's pretty much the snow season, so November through April, yeah.
Trustee Markwart?
Yes, the, I honestly look at this because I do this, so there's been complication of getting personnel in public works, number one, and two, it's having a CDL, and the CDL now has actually changed in its rules, how you get them. So it's, it's made it a more difficult aspect, and I would agree with all this.
Okay. Then is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Ordinance 2022-106.
Motion approve, approve ordinance dash 2022 dash 106.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.